Good evening. Welcome to Alpine City Council Meeting of June 6, 2016. Call the rule, please.
Johnson?
Here.
Nielsen?
Here.
Noack?
Here.
Sexton?
Here.
Walagora?
Here. Mr. Rice for the play.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any modifications to the agenda this evening? Approval of the minutes from regular session May 16, 2016. Any issues or changes? Citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. If you'd like to do so, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records. This is the only time during the council meeting that you're allowed to address council tonight with the exception of the public hearing, the two public hearings on the parking districts. So, anything outside of that, otherwise you can wait until those topics come up.
Michael Kelishewski, 7066 the Coleman Road, your assistant city building official. I just wanted to update council on public safety building. We're making great progress there. More gutters hanging off of the eaves, softest systems in place, you know, access hatches are being put in, piping no more water leaking through this office in different areas. Some of the snow retention, you might notice is on the building, and things were progressing well on it. They used Meridian Construction Contracting who's performing the work. Used several cases of mastig, a lot of new flashing material, counter flash, I was up on the roof and looked at a lot of the workmanship. Very pleased with the workmanship. The crew from Meridian has taken ownership of the building, which shows in their work. And they've done a few things above and beyond once they got into it, once they removed some of the mastig in some areas, found where there needed to be some additional flashes and such put in. And so, a lot of gutters, there's heat trace cable as well as all in on the drain line so we can hopefully avoid any more freeze up in lines being broken and stuff. So, the building's progressing well. I would say we're about seventy-five percent complete with that phase of it. There is some more work that needs to be done, as we all know that's budgeted for. So, we're moving forward on, starting to work on those bit. So, I'll be back up here probably before too long asking for more money or approval for more money. But, I also want to thank Rich Stollinger on this whole transition, for me into this position, for his help and support, and then also the support of my supervisor, Mr. Gilmet. There's been, it's been a big learning curve, but I've enjoyed the challenge. We're also working, as you can see, some of the doors are being worked down here at City Hall. And we're also going to be looking at the exterior envelope of City Hall as far as getting it sealed. And there's a few other projects that are involved with as well, water treatment, like things for heating systems. So, I just wanted to bring council up to date on the progress on public safety. When I asked, it was funny, I asked a couple of the personnel there, I said, you know, have you noticed any more roof leaks? Because we've gotten rain recently and stuff. And you just got that deer in the headlights look like, they were so used to the roof leaks that it really hadn't dawned on them whether it's leaking anymore or not. So, I've asked Deputy, you know, Bobby Adrian to just speak with the shift command and find out, you know, if we're seeing any water infiltration. So, then we're going to start working on getting some of those type of stuff and stuff. Just kind of wanted to bring that to speed up.
Great. Thanks, Mike.
You want to know Steve Showitz isn't here tonight. I'm Jason Hoggden. I'm covering for him while he's on vacation in Vegas. If he hits it big, he might not even have to go. I'm trying to introduce myself. I go, my byline's Jason, everyone calls me Jay, so Greg knows me from a couple of different TVTA, but I just wanted to let you know who I was, so, thanks.
Thank you. Thanks, Ray.
My name's Tom Rose. I'm the Vice President of the Alpine Blues Coalition, and we would just like to thank you so much for the recognition that you give us and the help that the city and the council gives us every year. We try to do our best to support our community and bring people in to help our local business owners and also to expose people to the pleasures and the beauties of Alpine and what a great community it is. So, we'd like to say thank you so much and thanks for the community support.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Okay. Consent agenda this evening. A is bills to be allowed in the amount of $587,971.19. B is movies on the bay, request to add September 16th, 23rd, and 30th for movies on the bay and authorize a variance of the noise ordinance from 10:00 PM to 12:00 AM on those corresponding dates. C is the Alpine Blues Coalition, request for a variance of a noise ordinance from 10:00 PM to 12:00 AM on June 18th for the Alpine Blues Festival. And D is the city council appointment to the Wildlife Sanctuary Board for a three-year term expiring June 1st, 2019, is Susan Austin.
May we approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you. No presentations. Pardon me. An announcement this evening, this evening is to register vote deadline is July 5, 2016 for the August 2, 2016 state primary election. Did you have anything else on that?
I just wanted to say that we have two big elections, the August and the November elections. So, anybody that's not sure if they're registered to vote, we just encourage you to call now or come into the clerk's office, because it's better to do it now than wait until you're in line at the, at the polls and wonder if you voted or not, or if you're registered. Because a lot of people only vote in the larger elections. So, we have the July 5 deadline for August 2 to register to vote. If you want to vote on the November 8, you have until August 2 to register to vote.
Proclamation this evening. Alpine Blues Coalition's 13th Anniversary Blues Festival week. Excuse me, I'm sorry, I don't know what's going on here. Whereas the Alpine Blues Coalition was started in November 2003 for the purpose of furthering blues music awareness and appreciation, and whereas the first Alpine Blues Festival was held in 2004 and subsequent successful festivals have been held each year since, and whereas the Blues Coalition provides a program called Blues in the Schools Music Outreach as a way of raising awareness and educating students in traditional American blues music, and whereas events sponsored in the past include blues bands at the Friday Night Downtown Concert Series, blues performers at various venues around town, and fighting hunger in our community. And whereas over the years, successful fundraisers have been held to support and promote awareness of upcoming blues, Alpine Blues Festivals, held every June at the Alpine County Fairgrounds. This year's festival will be held on Saturday, June 18, 2016. Now therefore, I, Matthew J. Walagora, by the virtue of authority vested in me as the Mayor of the City of Alpine, do hereby proclaim the week of June 12 through the 18, 2016 as Alpine Blues Week in Alpine, and urge all area citizens to recognize and support the efforts of the Alpine Blues Coalition's 13th Anniversary Blues Festival. And we have a Coalition Blues Festival, Coalition Blues Coalition. Okay, next up is public hearing. First one's Planning Commission Case Number 16-Z-01, Request to Rezone 825 Lockwood Street Lap Behind Thunder Bay Chrysler. I'll start with opening the public hearing and a report by Planning and Development Director Adam Paul. Let's hear your reading. Sure?
All right. For case 16-01, Eric School of Properties has filed petition to rezone 0.84 acres located at 825 Lockwood Street from RT to Family Residential District to CCD Commercial Four-Door District for the purpose of converting that location to an outdoor vehicular parking and sales area. As part of Thunder Bay Chrysler's request to expand their operations, they have requested that the St. Anne's Church parking lot located at 825 Lockwood be rezoned to CCD as they're in the process of acquiring the property. The applicants would like to use the lot initially for vehicular storage and parking as it is currently zoned RT, this use is not allowed. Churches are allowed to have parking in residentially zoned areas, but not commercial uses. The applicants would have also requested and been granted a special use permit by the Planning Commission for this lot to allow for outdoor vehicular sales. It appears a rezon request would not appear to have a negative impact on the area. The lot has been utilized for years for church parking and will continue to be utilized for parking. The lot is isolated from the residential uses in most directions and screening can be used for the resident on the opposite side of 10th Avenue. Staff noted during the initial hearing that zoning the property CCD would allow for potential future, future development. An option was discussed to rezone the parking, the property to P1, which would prevent any use except parking, but that, that effect, that would affect the use of the property to be utilized for outdoor vehicular sales in the future, as well as any building that the dealership may want to develop in the future. Due to the large number of commercial and institutional uses surrounding the lot, staff feels that CCD district is appropriate for the lot in question and is best suited for the area. The Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of the rezon request at six to zero at their May 10, 2016 meeting, and as a zoning change amends the zoning map, city council is required to approve any amendments for the adoption of an ordinance. Therefore, as staff are not, not appear, as the request would not appear to change the use of the property at this time, and as any future development would appear to have minimal impact on any nearby residential uses, it would appear to fit in with the existing CCD district already present on the block, staff would recommend approval of the request to rezon 825 Lockwood from RT to CCD Commercial Four-Door District.
Okay.
And if you can see it up here. Okay. Lockwood here, and then staff would just, they'd rest that lot's using.
Adam, if you want to stand by just for a second, I'll call for open public comment if anyone would like to come up and comment on this particular rezoning issue. See, no one. Any comments received by the clerk's office?
No.
Close the public comment period and open for council discussion if anyone has questions for Adam or anyone else. I have no questions. Right, right. We're all really familiar with the stewards and their project, so I didn't expect too much.
That seems to fit in well with what's going on there, so.
Great to kind of wrap up their project here, so. Thank the Planning Commission for all the work that they did, of course, on that as well. So, that would take an action to authorize the city attorney to draft an ordinance for first reading on June 20. So move.
Noack?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, stewards, again, for coming. Next up is B, Planning Commission Case Number 16-Z-02, Request to Rezone 112 South 8th Avenue from RT to Family Residential to P1 Vehicular Parking District. Open the public hearing and hear a report by our Planning Director, Adam Paul.
Two rezones in one week. The applicants are requesting this rezon for the purpose of converting the south half of, of the existing lot to overflow parking for its existing restaurant, Burge's, which is located in 328 West Chisholm. In October 2015, a special use permit was granted to Burge's Restaurant to allow the use of parking across Chisholm Street at 635 West Chisholm. The applicants have commented that crossing Chisholm Street is not ideal and utilizing two commercial lots with high visibility for parking only is not the highest and best use of the property. In addition, Burge's has been looking to acquire some office space for their business. The property at 112 South 8th has become available and utilizing the property as an office and as overflow parking would appear to solve both issues for the restaurant as well as open up the space for development on Chisholm Street. The existing property at 112 South 8th has been utilized as an office for many years. Currently, half of the, half of the lot is owned OS1 Office Service District. Burge's would like to utilize the office but pave, but pave most of the remaining yard and rezon the remainder of the lot to allow for parking. The applicants initially requested that the other half be rezoned OS1, but staff advised them that if this was, if the use was only to be for parking, that a rezoned request to P1 would ensure that it could not be, it could be utilized for parking and it would not be able to be utilized for any other development type. And if, and if they did, anybody did want to develop that in the future, they would have to go through the rezon process. The proposed parking lot site plan shows a seven-foot side yard setback along 8th Avenue, a zero-foot setback along 629 Lockwood to the southeast, and a zero setback, zero-foot setback from Lockwood Avenue right away. The applicants are proposing to utilize privacy fences along Lockwood Street adjoining the residence, and the adjoining residence to the south. Zoning ordinance calls for a 10-foot side yard setback along any residential district, which can be reduced to five feet by staff if site constraints are demonstrated. In this case, there are, does appear to be a demonstrated constraint, but the five-foot setback is, is not being met and a variance would be required. Staff noted that utilizing the entire residential lot for parking would be out of character with the area. A six-foot privacy fence is not allowed in a required front yard, and a three-foot fence would be required to block the headlights, but would still allow the vehicles to be visible to the nearby residences. Staff felt that if the 20 feet closest to the Lockwood Street were not included in the rezon, that the residences in the area would be less impacted and Burge's could still include up to 12 potential parking spaces with their, with the shown design. A six-foot privacy fence would then be utilized along Lockwood Street, blocking the view from any park, blocking any residential view of any parked cars. At the hearing, David Guzman noted that he lived across Lockwood Street at 636 Lockwood Street and felt that if it was approved, that it would lower his property value and felt that this type of commercial encroachment should not be allowed in residential neighborhood. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the request for the reduced rezon area that did not include the 20 feet of the parcel closest to Lockwood Street at the May 10 meeting with a four-two vote. Planning Commissioner, as opposed to the request, noted that Burge's already had overflow parking across Chisholm Street and that the additional parking was unnecessary at this location and would encroach into a residential neighborhood. Those that voted in favor of the reduced request noted the proposed parking area would be screened by six-foot privacy fence from the residential properties and that the building has been utilized as an office for years and has existing screening for its parking. As a request to change to the zoning, Planning Commission makes a recommendation that city council is needed to approve the adoption of a new ordinance. As the existing use of the structure is an office and the rezon request would allow a small parking lot to be constructed and that parking would be screened from nearby residences, staff would recommend approving the reduced zoning request and that be approved.
Thank you, Adam. If you want to hold tight for a second, pardon me. Any open public comment on the topic or that Adam described?
Greg Berg, I own Burge's, and I just wanted to mention that the one opposition, David I did talk to today, and he is on board with our investment that's going to improve property values. He, he didn't understand it before, number one. Number two, it is going to be a lot safer for our customers. Crossing Chisholm, this opportunity just came up a couple of months ago, so we're taking advantage of it. And primarily, we cannot develop that property across the street for an addition on the restaurant and reinvest in the community. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any written comments received?
No.
Close the public comment and open for council discussion. Anyone have questions for Adam? I do, but I'll wait. I'm going to kick it off.
Kick it off.
I'll kick it off. I just wanted to make, make sure, I rode by there today, and I'll just, I'll start just really quick by thanking the Burges for taking that building out that is across the street from your restaurant. Your current parking lot looks much better than the graffiti build, building that we had there for several years. And I, I rode by there today, Adam, and I was trying to dig up the pictures that you, that you put in here. We've got a couple of different, a couple of different versions of the parking lot and what you mean by, not that one, or even that, that one. So, what you mean by, by the setback, this is the area that's, that's kind of what would be next door to the office. The office currently has a little bit of blacktop on it already.
Correct. I need it better than my labels, because I left them off of this. But basically, this shot shows the existing front yard looking down Lockwood from the foot hall, standing on the corner.
Yeah.
This is the area, you can, on the right-hand side of the photo, that's the area I propose leaving as zoned RT, which would not be incorporated as a parking lot. That 20 feet type request, the Planning Commission requested to leave off the rezon area.
So, mean 20 feet back from the sidewalk.
Oh, so 20 feet back from the sidewalk.
To kind of line up with the house.
Okay.
That's, you can see down there with the front of the house.
Okay, so it lines up with the front of the house, which is what the six-foot code is for?
Correct. Basically, if they were allowed to come out of the sidewalk, they're required to have screened, but they'd only be allowed to have three feet because there were a required front yard. This way, if we back to the line of the house, they can have a six-foot privacy fence and you want to see a giant, you know, giant parking lot here across the street.
Okay. Which is sort of there now, but it stops.
Correct. And you can see, unfortunately, it didn't get there, but you can see the fence is located in this area right here, and that fence is there now, so.
Okay.
Well, I'm glad you did this drawing for, for, did you do this?
Greg was there. I'll say.
Okay.
Mr. Berg was there.
I'm, I'm glad that I had this today because what I did have really didn't give me any, a good enough idea of what was going to happen on that property. And I went out there today to look at it, and then I got it. If you go and look at it, you really, you really get it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
But just had, seeing it with what we had earlier, it was, was hard to envision. But this is certainly, certainly a much better depiction of what it'll be like.
Yeah, very good, and I appreciate your reaching out to your, to your neighbor as well. It only means, I mean, for me, it only means kind of just what Greg said now, he's got the ability to, to get some development across Chisholm if he would like to, so.
It's been a good business in the community, and the parking's been a nightmare for, for years. I'm sure you guys know that, so. I'm glad to see you take advantage of opportunity to, to improve when you can.
I have one comment, since I just got this, as you did. It has nothing to do with the rezoning, because that's totally separate issue, but as staff does the site plan, final approval and that, is the way they have it with the parking going right up to the fence, if all those cars are in there, these cars getting out really have to back all the way out. Normally, what they do is those last spaces are not there because that provides a turnaround where they can back out and turn in, and I would strongly recommend that.
I spoke to Mr.
On here as well. They could simply pave it, but cross hatch it as a no parking area, simply to allow cars, otherwise it's going to be very difficult for some of those, the cars on the end to get in and out.
I spoke to Mr. Berg about that prior to this, so that's where we, at least one parking spot, maybe two if, if we don't have more room to fill. But we'll, we'll get it, we'll get it right.
That's why there was one that said 13, one said 15, and there was another one that said 17.
Not 12, yeah.
Changed it a little bit.
And that's all great, that's fine. Great. No other issues? Look, motion to authorize the city attorney to draft an ordinance for first reading on June 20.
So move.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks, Adam. Our report of officers tonight, bids for mitigation, baseline study, and management plan. Rich?
In January of this year, city council authorized state receivable with securing a permit to fill 0.37 acres of wetlands on the city's US 23 North property in an effort to make the east 70 acres accessible from US 23 and thereby promoting economic development on the site. City staff has been working with the MDEQ and has obtained a permit to fill the wetlands contingent upon the preservation of 5.87 acre portion, which is the balance of the city-owned land on Grand Street. The remainder of the property on Grand Street is under previous conservation easement. As part of this preservation and a requirement of the D E Q permit, the city is responsible for providing a baseline study, short-term and long-term management plans for the property. These are specialized reports that are normally performed by environmental consultants. On May 9, 2016, the city received an open proposals from four firms interested in performing this work. Cardno out of West Island, Michigan, total is $9,050. GBI Consultants out of Allendale, $13,478. Golden Associates out of Lansing, $17,768. And DLZ out of Lansing for $28,260. The low bidder, Cardno, has completed the project similar in size and type to our, our project. They have a history of wetland permitting and are familiar with requirements at the MDEQ for wetland investigation and reporting. The proposed cost is substantially lower than the initial budgetary proposal received of $26,000. After reviewing the bids and in consideration of the above information, as my recommendation of city engineer, the city council award the Grand Street Wetlands Survey to Cardno in the amount of $9,050. If the MDEQ requires any additional work as a result of the short and long-term management plans, this work would be done, would be at the standard hourly rates as submitted in their proposal. Staff would work with the consultants and report back to city council if this is necessary. Basically, this is the first hoop that you have to jump through in this process.
Look at all those bids.
Like how you call it in the first hoop. It feels like venture a couple, right? Just a couple of questions for my own educational value. .375 acres, we have to turn 5.87. Isn't it ordinarily just double the land mass, or now it's like?
Or like 10 to 1. It's at least 10 to 1.
Is 10 to 1? All right. I mean, I'd like to just.
10 to 1, like.
Perfect math for the ruler, because it makes me so angry, I guess. My other question, I guess, is, and I may have asked this before, but just to, just to follow up, is this the last of the city property we have left to mitigate, or do we have more elsewhere?
That would be the balance of the Grand Street property. And although the wetlands has to be permitted up on 23 North, it's not good enough to preserve it.
I know you're getting worried.
As a countermeasure.
Yeah, yeah.
Trust me. I remember that very well. Because I think it's important that we know that this is, this is it. If there's any other, any other wetlands in the city of Alpine that we would like to, that someone would like to do, whether they own it or, well, we wouldn't own it, but property that someone else owns in the city, there's.
There is other wetlands of similar nature, but it's privately held.
Right.
Or in the hands of Alpine Police Forces. Or in the hands of a beautiful school.
And can that be, so let's just say that I'm a private developer and I happen to have some property that I want to build on, and it's on wetlands. Ordinarily, I would come to the city and the city would offer to mitigate some property for me. In the event, can you cross governmental boundaries? Can they go to the township and ask that property?
Or private property owners.
Or private property, so even if it's not even in the same governmental unit, you can mitigate property.
It's just, it's got to be a higher quality wetlands, which that wetlands along Grand Street is of a much higher quality. It's a, they call it a doing its well complex. They were happy to see that in a preservation easement.
Sure. I just hate running out of something. And we're running out of something, so that's fine.
Rich, I just kind of see if this sounds so silly outside in my mouth as it sounds in my head, but Michigan Department of Environmental Quality wants an environmental study and they want us to do it. Why don't they just do that for themselves?
Because we're the ones requesting the permit. And as a condition of the permit, we're required to do the various steps involved by that permit, including the baseline assessment, short-term, long-term management plans. We basically have $10,000, Karen, or $50,000.
For their letter of credit?
Yeah, letter of credit.
100 or 120?
Yeah, 150.
I couldn't remember. We've already put that letter of credit up, but we aren't going to do these activities. They had to have that first.
I think their argument is with all of them that are out there, they don't have the staff to do it. I guess they apparently have the staff to review it, hopefully, and tell us whether it's right, but not to do it.
There's, Steve worked with them, there's a book about this, the all the requirements that have to be in the baseline assessment.
$9,000 seems reasonable.
When you get four bids, it's really good.
Just wanted to see what that sounded like out loud.
That's kind of what we thought it was going to sound like.
It's riveting.
If they loosen the screws a little bit, it'll be easier.
Any other questions or comments on that? Take action?
I move we approve the bid from Cardinal in the amount of $9,050 for the baseline, short-term, long-term management plans.
Slacker.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Slow line. Sure. See, no communications on business. We have new business. A is the Northeast Michigan Rehabilitation Opportunity Center or NEMROC program.
And this is, this is what just makes you feel like working these things. On Thursday, I met with Joe Garrett of NEMROC regarding programs he recently started to benefit the community. These programs are operated through the NEMROC Supportive Employment. The first program, which was initiated on Wednesday, May 18, is the Cigarette Litter Brigade. Through this program, NEMROC-supported employees will walk both public and private areas of the community, picking up cigarette litter for recycling. NEMROC has founded a company, Terricycle, who will recycle the cigarette litter into plastic products. He has acquired 40 cigarette disposal cans through a grain process. This is what they would look like. With installation support from the city, they will provide and service these as part of the program. Basically, what I talked to Joe Garrett is the people to be able to walk and pick up the cigarette. The installation is the difficult. I had Sean, actually, I had Sean McHenry in there with me during this meeting, and we looked at it. These are pretty simple. We mount, we have to put a four-by-four post in to mount them on, whatever, we can get them mounted. Not a big deal. We are going to make some modifications so that little darlings don't get this to the peephole, and we're going to try to secure that to the top. But Joe Garrett indicated he got it granted, bought about 40 of these. With installation support, they will provide and service these as part of the program. It is their intention to install 12 to 14 of these cans throughout the parks in downtown. They do have one. He actually, we met on the 19th, he actually started it on the 18th in our parks on the north side, starting screws over there. So he actually said, if you don't mind, I was picking up cigarette litter in your park. No, that's fine. Go ahead. But the other thing, he's got some brochures out there. This is available to both public and private entities. The private entity, the one that Bill's office, with all this grass that he has there, wanted to hire them for $50 a month, they would come through and pick up cigarette litter on their property. I'm sure all their debris as well. Per Joe, excuse me, $20 a month. Per Joe Garrett, the NEMROC is requesting minimal support from private entities for performing this service on the grounds of $20 per month. He's indicated that this service will be performed free of charge on public properties, who would also appreciate any support the city could provide to keep the program running. The other program that NEMROC is running is the Pollination Brigade. Under this program, NEMROC-supported employees assemble the various bird, bath, and butterfly houses and feeders, which are NEMROC fabricates, and paint them for installation throughout the community at the cost of just the kit. So instead of just any of the kit, they would provide us with a fully complete bird bath or butterfly house. As stated, the cigarette litter brigade began performing services as a community project on Wednesday, May 18, 2016, by working through Avery Park. They have requested permission to continue on throughout the bounds of the city parks. I feel that this is both a great benefit for the community and an opportunity for NEMROC to support their employees and have granted permission for them to continue. And I really wanted to present this for a couple of reasons. First and foremost, to get the recognition for NEMROC and the services and programs they provide. And second, to recognize the value that these individuals working this program are providing to the community. Third, finally, to get support from city council for this program. I would like to recommend that city council authorize a $200 per month payment to NEMROC for these services. Basically, we would start July 1 with our new budget year, and it would run through, obviously, the fall, probably September, October, and maybe we shut down for the winter. I would also propose that the city council authorizes me to work with Pollination Brigade to install bathhouses, butterfly houses, et cetera, throughout the public areas and public gardens to support the concept of this program. Funding is available at our Parks Repair and Maintenance line item for support of these types of services. And I've included copies of the brochures for these programs through this memorandum. He was really, really excited about this and the opportunities it was going to give to support workers out there. And he said they were out in full force on that Wednesday and enjoying it.
Do you know offhand how many people are involved in the program from NEMROC?
No, I don't, not off the top of my head. He didn't indicate to me.
Well, we've seen in the past where all these cigarette butts end up. They end up on the beach, so every little thing like this counts and it matters, and when groups want to contribute to our quality of life, I'm certainly happy to support them.
They will, all of our parks, shoreline parks, will be included in that areas that they pick up. And just for another aside, through the efforts of the recycling committee and city, we're working right now to acquire eight recycling bins. Total, two of them paid for by the DDA. The city is purchasing six to place at various parks. Two at the Bane Shelf are for sure, coupled down by the Satellite Pavilion and Bath House, and the other two are, we'll figure out where the best locations for those. Those were ordered about two weeks ago, two, three weeks ago, and we're just waiting for those for delivery, and then they will be put out. So just another, we're trying to get this, and I think the fact that they found a source to recycle the cigarette butts is a great thing.
Yeah, I think it's great, Rich. Appreciate it. I don't think anyone here is...
No, and I remissly, I should have given Joe Garrett a call in...
That's fine. We met. He did a little presentation. Greg reminded me, it might have been a Good Morning Breakfast or it was something at the senior center. I remember seeing at least the birdhouses and so, yeah, that's great. We've obviously had issues with cigarette butts, and the school system was trying to kind of get something together, so this is...
We did move, I assure you, we moved one of our existing dispensers down by the volleyball courts for their request as well to the city.
Yeah, great. Do you need action on this for the $200? If this was all just...
I'd like the city council's support for that.
Sure. Anybody got any other questions for Rich about that?
Will we approve the payment of $200 a month to NEMROC for these services that were discussed?
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Sure. Next up, plumbing and mechanical inspector contract.
We now offer the highlight of the evening.
Why, it's last.
As you're aware, several months ago, you authorized me, the council authorized me to begin the process of being able to do our own electrical and mechanical inspections and permitting. And prior to getting the permission from the state, I wanted to make sure that we had a registered inspector that would be available to do these under the contract similar to what we did with the electrical. As president of the Northeast Michigan Code Officials Organization, I asked our members to meetings if they knew of any qualified people, and our group covers from Bay City all the way up through the UPs, with hundreds of inspectors, building officials. I had inquiries from inspectors who were either qualified in plumbing or mechanical, but not in both. Mechanical inspectors are very hard to come by because there are so many different areas of mechanical inspecting that requires a lot of certificates. Plumbing, evidently, not so many, but the one individual I did find that was qualified is both plumbing and mechanical inspector was Mr. Bruce Tillinger, who also happened to do the majority of Alpena County already. He does the other townships here. He does Ostigo County, and he does Mount Renzi County on a contractual basis. After checking with both the building officials and those adjoining counties who I know very well, as well as with over a half a dozen mechanical and plumbing contractors, nobody had anything negative to say about him. And that was important to me because you need to have good inspectors to keep the program going and people willing to spend money to do these things just to make a safer built environment. So he will work as a subcontractor, exactly the same as our electrical subcontractor does now, basically 80/20 split. And therefore, I would recommend that in the contract, you may note it looks exactly like the electrical inspector's contract. It was sent to Bill. He approved it, didn't see any issues with it, informed, that is. Therefore, I would recommend the council approve the contract and authorize the mayor to sign the second. Any questions?
No. Great work. Great. Pretty simple contract. I could actually read it, so, but good work. We really appreciate it.
And just as a side note, he'll give us at least Mondays and Fridays, so like two days a week. Right now, you got one day every two to three days of your office, so it really messes up the construction process all over the place.
Thank you, sir.
I move we approve the contract for mechanical plumbing inspection as presented.
Slacker. Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
I move adjourn.
You're close.
You are watching All About Alpena.